At this time, Commissioner Keller will believe us in our prayer.
Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight just to ask your blessing on our decisions. We thank you, Lord, for living here in Catoosa County and all the good life that you have been praised and given us. And dear Lord, we just ask your guidance and blessing in all of our decisions. We pray for all the citizens, the families, and the grandchildren. In the name, we pray for the United States, the great state of Georgia, and Catoosa County. In your name we pray.
Salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wong.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here. At this time, I know we're removing the one I've added from the agenda.
Yes, we would need to remove the reasonable accommodations modification policy of the Federal Fair Housing Act. It's not ready yet. It'll be ready by the end of the day.
Okay, and we are adding to the agenda an acceptance of the donation for the colonnade, correct?
Correct.
And we are adding.
Exactly.
The second person. Can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda? Salute. Second. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
And is. Salute. Does everyone have a chance to look over the pen, and if so, do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Second. All in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to appearances, would you mind letting speak? Sir, or lamb, do you want to go first, Bill?
No, I'm.
Sir. Please, yes, sir. Oh, yeah. If you would state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Larry Ball. I live on Pumper Street, Joe, in 1729 Pumper Street, Joe. And in 2000, quite a while back, we've got a problem there in Pumper Street, about 4.7 acres of property behind my house that continuously stays flooded all the time. And it's called a sinkhole, whether you know it or not. But the problem having is him sometime back had converted some water running into this sinkhole where the Lord had told him that there would be evil water running into that sinkhole while it already had been into the subways in there. And two different places, one place dumped a circle behind my house. They cut out some curving in there, about five or six foot of curving in there, didn't put a catch brace in it, didn't put a backdrop in it or anything, they just dumped it off into my lot, my property, and it continuously being flooded. And I've got your pictures, I'd like to show you.
Now, what's that vision there?
This is some damage that I sustained in my house.
What's that vision there?
The Pumper Street.
Thank you.
The Chair of the United States.
Yes. Do you actually live in the subway there, sir?
No, the very first block, the Chair of the United States, down on Pumper Street, Joe, side there. This is a back and forth from a field, Larry Ball. He lives on. 1729 Pumper Street, Joe. There's the, where it cut that out, where it all was just knocked out. I pleaded with them.
Thank you.
And I pleaded with them on the circle back there because it's, well, it's been paved and subwayed up there for a long time since some vision was set. And I asked them if there was something that I could raise, paint it up a little bit to the water to stay right in that corner there. And, well, they couldn't be accepted, but they chose to come out through that. I pleaded with them, pleaded with them not to do that. And this is kind of substantially done there. That's right behind some houses there.
Do you mind if we do some checking of this? Would you leave your number with a leash along or would you get a hold of it?
And that was basically what the water was standing back there, it would be like that, and it would come out without the skids. It would go away after a night or two was dry. That was out there in the main road. They completely cut that, either the back or something, they also cut it out down there in the main road. And unsustainable, a lot of water getting out of the river there, the Pumper Street and the road there, the Chair of the United States, catching water in the acre, the water being dumped, taken into that sinkhole. And this sinkhole was about, just about blocked out there because I've got 28 days of standard water in that sinkhole back there. And it's.
Would you mind giving her, giving her a leash if your possible number of people would be able to use it?
That's kind of, there, that's, I've had to put the floor in the flash, which looks out a lot of options. The only picture that I've shown there, that's what I'm, where they moved that. And that's all the way of the question. Complete, covered, filled with layers, 48 days. I don't know if they were, they were.
Hold on a second.
We're in an area there where.
Where?
Where the fill lines were. They're all around us, all covered down here. I think it caused, it quickly there, caused a, you asked on the outside, water going down the top, it's about four minutes there. You can't, you can't, you can't, you can't.
Mr. Carr, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll leave my church, you get your number before you make the motion for me to. And that would get a hold of it. Right at the name and address, I'm not gonna play.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, come out there.
Well, what's that here?
Okay.
Thank you. Mike, sir, give your advice. Thank you. Could I please, Bill, if you had your.
My name is Bill Swims and I live in the county, Mr. Chair, this is my mission here. And I know y'all missed the fifth, but that's another, another story for another meeting, okay? But tonight, I have a question, I know you're not gonna answer it, but nobody brought before this board that the economic development board bought the acreage out of 41 South. I got a copy of the checks and they were well over a million dollars. And I always thought, apparently, that's not a rule anymore. They used to bring those kind of issues to this board so the public could hear what they were buying, where they were buying, and how much it would cost. I didn't know that we were laying porches just to buy property and not in, for the public that's actually paying for it. That's a lot of money. It's not the idea that they're buying it, it's that they bought it and nobody knew anything about it. And my question was, I got a copy of those checks back in front. I'd like to know why those checks were written off of general fund, and there may be a logical explanation, I don't know. But when you write checks like that, shouldn't you write it off of the whatever organization is paying for it? That is my question. Also, we had a little girl leave the county and go to work for the state, take her county that worked for the economic development. When she left, she was making $38,000 a year plus her benefits. We hired a person that is from another economic development group at $70,000. Don't y'all think we're setting a precedent here? Because that don't seem hardly fair, that you had a person leave here at $38,000 and hire someone for $70,000. And that just doesn't make a lot of logical sense. Because I think you're setting yourself up maybe for discrimination, something along the line. And trust me, if that was me, I would be, I'd be a real good attorney. Thank you.
Sweetie, may I ask, please? Is the answer, Ray, or Kim? Is Richard Grove sitting there? Call him that, Richard.
Good evening. Glad to be here. I'm here looking for approval of the Hoopla Service Agreement. Hoopla is a digital library. You have ebooks, audiobooks, movies, music, so it's available to anyone with a Catoosa County library card 24/7, no matter when the library is open, which is great because everybody can't always be at the library when the library is open. So this would expand the library's reach to everyone in the community. Anybody with a smartphone, anybody with internet access would effectively have increased access to library services. There's a $12,000 deposit because it is an on-demand program, so as soon as a vendor downloads an item with vendor, then owes the publisher for that license. So I'm here looking for approval for this service tonight.
Salute. Second. Alan, you have any questions? Where's the funding? Is it in your grant budget or?
We have sponsor funding and state grant funding that we can use.
Yes. You're saying that it would be took out as people use it?
Yes.
And this, if somebody, do they have to be a county resident, or do you, do anybody in the nation use it?
No, it is going to be limited to people with only our library card, and it has already been tested with the vendor, that restrictions, they will have to have a library card just for Catoosa County. And we can put limits in place as well for the number of downloads someone can do every month. So in other words, we don't rack up 30, 40,000 in charges, it'll be limited, whatever we decide.
Was this grant just for this?
No, the library receives a state grant every year based on our population, as well as materials grant based, again, on population from the state government. So we utilize those grants for all of our services and quite a bit of our materials as well.
Are all of these as big a question? Can you, can the splash be used for this?
Us was used for our library materials, yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Alan, in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners? The county currently contracts with SKB for facilities maintenance and have been since 2016. In the past, the library was being claimed by part-time employee ability maintenance. And the only, it was the only person in bed of maintenance, been a client of it than SKB. And so, we, guy, SKB gave us a proposal. It was roughly the same that we were planning, part-time employees, so to standardize everyone who does light jobs. SKB gave us a price of 1324 Aiden Mall, which was 15,897.60. Carl reviewed it, that was roughly what we were planning, part-time employees. So, SKB, they're moving forward, they're moving forward with them doing it. So it just kind of cleans it up. Because that person was answering to me, in our own office, did I ever already receive it? So, it was a question when I kind of took the job, was, you know, why are they recording me? Because I didn't supervise them, so. So now, the total contract for SKB would be, it would go up 15,897.60 to 169,257.26.
Do I have a motion? Sorry. The money will go up 15, but before the money backs down to a 10.
But that money is going from the building maintenance side going to the SKB.
So if us are missing, we're just trading dollars.
It's a wash, yeah, absolutely.
What's some of the other maintenance that they, I mean, clean, and they do, what's another building?
All of them. All of them. I mean, all of them.
The only thing they weren't doing was the library.
That was a unique job.
So now we're blanking on it. Yes, which doesn't change that, it wasn't recently, so it wouldn't have.
And like I said, I didn't, I had very little contact, but they just, they didn't make a change, so.
All in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Travis? Shirley, would you like to come up here?
Tonight, we're here to accept a donation from Shirley for the operation and programming of dance theater. And she puts on a big event at her dance theater, and I'll give her a second to tell us about it.
Thank you. It's nice to see you guys again. Sorry, Commissioners, I should not call you guys. But in September of last year, and you all know about September of last year because you were kind enough to be there and do a wonderful thing for the Wesley Smith family. Last year, Wesley Smith and Wesley and friends held an inaugural benefit for the Weston Shirley Smith Charitable Endowment. And thanks to the wonderful support, we have been able to start our journey to help our communities. If I could, I'd like to tell you a little bit about how we got started and why we got started and where we're going from there. The endowment was started when Wesley passed away in January of 2015. And while it was live, Wesley was very personally involved in this community, pioneered Northwest Georgia Bank Foundation to better benefit the community. And his wish to us before he died was that when the bank was gone, that we would be able to continue what had been done with that. During his time with the foundation and for the 100th birthday of the Northwest Georgia Bank, an amphitheater was built and given to the community. He did school, system academics, the band, athletics, all were recipients of his generosity. The Learning Center, the Colonnade Theater, and various other community buildings were given their start. When the tornado ripped through Ringo in 2011, they were the first to give COAD $50,000 to help to start the rebuilding, and more later on also. These are just a small handful of things that were done during that time, and we've been lucky enough to honor his name and his wishes by doing the Weston Shirley Smith Charitable Endowment. And what we want to do is start our fundraising and start by giving $5,000 to the amphitheater. And that's to be used for, I think there was lighting and plug-ins and things that are extra. He goes to right there. This is my granddaddy, this is Wesley Smith's granddaddy, this is Christmas' baby. But it's all a family business and we're all out here doing things for the community. And we are entrusting that all that will be done. They've been wonderful to help us with the thing we started out in September. And I think the bank was the first one, the whole one out there when it started, they had a lot of things out there. It is a jewel. The whole campus, the Bitten Place campus out there is a jewel in Catoosa County, and I know that you feel that way too. But this is just the beginning. As we grow and do more, we will give more. And thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll let that crack.
And I've got another one that's very dear to my heart.
Yes, sir.
If I could continue with the second one? The colonnade has always been something that's very, very close to all of us too, because we worked there. And I was on the performing arts theater, the group that did it out there. And they had a little bit of money extra, and at that time, we disbanded. And so, it was given to the Northwest Georgia Bank Foundation. It was still in there, never touched. So, we are, it was given to us to keep the arts in Catoosa County going, and I'd like to present $5,000 to Ms. Laura Ogden for the colonnade. And I talked to Laura, asked her about something that she was, had on her wish list that she knew she probably couldn't get. And one of the things, when, as you all know, I was on the performing arts group out there, and one of the things is we had some of the most marvelous paintings that local people did. And they were on walls, but we couldn't put holes in the walls anymore. So, if you notice, there's been no painting. Our local people don't have a place to show their talents. So, that money will be spent. I don't know which problem it was.
It's an art display system that will go all around the hallways and the lobby, and we'll be able to change out already exhibits to display. A lot of times, we have school groups, the annual performances, they was displaying artwork for the students. And what had happened in the past was they would just put nail holes in the wall. And, you know, 15 years of that was not a good idea. So I stopped that policy actually several years ago. But with that, we lost the opportunity to display artwork in the building, and this will give us an art display system that will safely display artwork in the community.
And I think Laura's got some plans for maybe having some art, art things to do and get people started back, because we have some of the most amazing talent. Thank you. Your, should skip. Some of the most amazing talent in Catoosa County, whether it's singing or on the stage or paintings. And I have several in my home, from the people around here. They are absolutely marvelous. And this is just a little like, thank you. Thank you. This is just a little like.
We're gonna pull them out. Can I get a motion to approve acceptance of the donation? Salute. Second. All in favor of accepting, say aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve acceptance of the donation to the colonnade? Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Now we can talk.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Turn that over.
I can't stop talking.
Thank you very much. Alan, I'll, we'll get a picture.
I want you to save the date, September 14th, because the boys are back in town.
I will. Not even use on this town with the boys.
Yes, but it's town. Well, let's just put it this way, I'll give you a hint, okay? It's the 40th anniversary of something.
I think so already.
Dukes of Hazzard?
Oh, do you like?
I didn't say it. But that's just, that's just one of two, there's lots of them. Please, big and large, and they draw on one.
You have a pair of others, and I'll let you check right out here.
This is Smith and Wesley, and we have a day on the map, so she has just, they have to get out and work for the picture.
Oh. Sorry. You're too big for me to speak, and there's not gonna clip.
Don't be a lot of pressure, especially chairs.
Oh, I'm tired.
Thank you. Thank you all. Remember September 14th.
Yeah.
See you there.
grant. I'd like to first recognize, Kim, if you could stand up, please? She was actually the author of the grant for the department. I stand up here, everybody thinks I do everything, but I can't, not without a great staff. She's also a homeschool parent, so she saw the need in the community, and more people I've talked to said, you know, nobody supported homeschool to their liking. So, it's a way to program our gyms during the day when they're not being used at all, so we're getting maximum usage out of our facilities. The class has been a success. It's definitely great, the winter months, they have to get the P E credits. And it was a program that the State of Georgia Parks and Rep Association said that may be able to be duplicated around in other counties to help other people maximize use of their facilities. So, this is actually our third grant we've received in the last six months, non-matching. Chelsea has been first and foremost in teaching her archery class. She helped write the archery grant, she's also helping with her other grants. Without the staff here, Eddie included, who we say, how can we shoot archery in doors without tearing up the walls? And he comes up from the system with the curtain, providing, you know, to rig it up. So, I want to take a few seconds to brag on my team, that we're here tonight, Eddie works with Shirley, and we do the amphitheater events. None of this can be done without a great team. I just wanted to take a few seconds and put some of the spotlight on them.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Salute. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you got one? And William, thank you for all we all did. Thank you.
All right, I would like to, what's your, what's your street bank now?
Yeah, right. It's a great night from the Recreation Department.
We also have another great community partner and first volunteer bank. Just on one, can you come up? Miss Almo, can you come up?
Ms. Almo Strava, First Volunteer Bank, has decided to partner with us on our first annual Quarter Hunt. Quarter Hunt, for those who don't know, we didn't want to get, you know, everybody's doing their Easter egg hunts for Christmas, Easter. So we decided to have one several weeks early, and they're donating the quarters that we will spread across the infield, so two ball fields, and then the kids lose playing quarters. So it will be a sight to see, and it is Saturday, April 7th, at 2:00 p.m. at Poplar Springs Ball Field, ages 6 to 12. Hunt quarters on the infield, and five and under will have fun activities where they get to hunt. And Mr. Exon stairs.
Do I have a motion to approve? Accept this donation?
Salute.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Nine and three.
Do a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll leave if you can get your rec bar.
Yes. Thank you.
Everbridge Mass Notification System.
Thank you. Moving on to the mass notification.
The total cost for this is $16,876. This is the mass notification system that was installed in 2012, shortly after our tornadoes.
Do I have a motion to approve? Make a motion? Sorry. Steve, is there a budget change to this, or is it pretty much the same?
This is the same as previous years.
So Steve, this is just a continuation that we had in place?
It is, yes, sir. And currently, we have checked a $27,654 subscribers on the system.
Pretty good, isn't it? Any other questions? All in favor of the proof, say aye.
Aye.
Steve, any other questions?
The next item I have is approval for a one-year maintenance contract with Vertiv Corporation for the maintenance and service of the battery backup system for 911. This is basically the battery backup system that power would go out, would work in conjunction with the generator, make sure that we don't lose power any time.
Do I have a motion to approve? Salute. This is the, submitted in 2016, we have a two-year maintenance agreement, this is the first year we're going to enter the service.
That's correct. It originally came in two years on the original comp, and then this will be the first year that I have to pay the maintenance.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Steve, thank you for the question. Sure. Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, the first item that I have is the proposed approval of the retention agreement to substitute in attorneys for the county in the opioid litigation. The county is currently, along with a lot of other state and local governments, a member of a class action lawsuit that's pending up in Ohio against opioid manufacturers and distributors, where we're seeking to recover increased costs that the opioid crisis has caused our emergency management and other departments to incur over the years to reimburse the county for those costs. Back in February of last year, the board approved an agreement to hire some attorneys who specialize in this type of litigation, and they have been representing the county. But what has happened is the Attorney General for the State of Georgia has hired that law firm to represent the state. And when that occurred, they could no longer represent any local governments, so they had to step aside. The law firm that has stepped aside is not claiming any fee or any expense reimbursement, and they've turned over all the work they've done to the county. The proposed agreement before you now is to hire the law firm of friends and ask you, Barry, Sigler, Richardson, and Davis out of Rome, Georgia, who also represents several local governments in our area in this type of litigation. They're willing to pick up the case and take it over. Their fee arrangement is the same as the previous law firm, which is a contingent fee arrangement, meaning that they only get paid if we recover any money. And if they, if we recover money, their fee will be one-third of the recovery. If they won't recover any money, we do not owe them.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Sorry. Okay, question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're skipping restricted one items of the agenda, and we've been on the chat and we'll do ambulance.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is a proposed resolution that does three things. First of all, the county currently has in place an emergency or ambulance service agreement with Angel Emergency Medical Services LLC to provide ambulance service to the county. That agreement has been in place since 2009. As recently as the last 12 months, Angel has ceased operating, but it has been bought by or merged into Puckett Emergency Management Services. And Puckett has been providing the same ambulance service to the county on a temporary basis pursuant to a temporary memorandum that expires at the end of this month. One of the things about our county that's pertinent to the action the board is considering is that our county's divided into two ambulance zones by state. There's the western half and the eastern half. Presently, the county only controls the eastern zone of Catoosa County, and the western zone is actually licensed to and controlled by Angel Emergency Medical Services LLC. The proposed resolution before the board would terminate the existing agreement with Angel, since they're no longer operating, and would also allow us to apply to the state to reopen and consolidate the county into one ambulance zone that would cover the entire county, and we would request that they assign that zone to the county. The third item would be to approve a new ambulance services agreement with Puckett Emergency Medical Services LLC. It would be a two-year agreement that's automatically renewable for two additional one-year terms, but we can terminate the agreement at any time, either party, on 180 days' notice to the other party. We would pay them a monthly subsidy of $20,833.33 per month, but that would, they would assign three full-time ambulances to Catoosa County stationed at different locations. They would guarantee response times to incidents that our emergency management and fire chiefs have negotiated and approved. There are certain equipment standards and staffing standards that they have to meet, and if they don't meet these standards, there would actually be monetary penalties where we could withhold certain amounts on their monthly tables. The staff has negotiated this agreement probably over the last six months, and we would recommend its approval to the board, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do I have a motion?
Salute.
Sorry. Do we have any questions? You want to play?
Just that we're very happy to be here. We've been providing service in Catoosa since June of last year. We also provide the non-ambulance service for several other counties around here as well, and so we very much enjoy being here. We want to be a part of the community here in Catoosa County, and we look forward to a long and bright future for this county. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. In addition to these three ambulances, they've also agreed to provide other equipment for special events, things like that.
They have, and they also have agreed to provide what they call peak ambulances, that they determine from emergency management standpoint what the peak call times or days could be, and they will make sure that in the, the three ambulances are what we are guaranteed out of here 24/7 each day, but there will also be other ambulances floating around at peak times to be sure they meet the required response times and direct. They will provide coverage for events such as high school football games, live fire training, exercises or disaster training, as well under the agreement. They'll also transport the sheriff's inmates at no additional charge to blood draws requested by law enforcement, no additional charges, and several items such as that.
So all that is wrapped into this one contract?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Do we have any reports?
All good, thank you. So we're here tonight to talk about the Catoosa County cleanup. We have Mayor Millwood back there for Ringgold, we have Jeff also kind of sitting in for City of Porto tonight. Catoosa County cleanup was kind of started a couple of years ago here, and I know the city of Ringgold had an event. We, the LIFT organization, really did an earth day. The rec department itself did a paddle pickup where we went down the rivers and cleaned up. And over the last year, we've worked with LIFT, but also many groups said, hey, we would like to do a cleanup. Can you bring out, pick up all our garbage if we do a cleanup on our own? So over the last year, I said, maybe we could combine these things and make it a really great event. So Saturday, April 27th, there's projects that have been coordinated with City of Ringgold, projects that have been coordinated with Porto, or projects that have coordinated the county, and there'll be beautification, garbage pickup, river cleanup, and also some of it will launch out of the amphitheater. There'll be, county's providing some transit buses, taking all the projects, maybe where there's not a lot of parking. There will also kind of be a kickoff and some food and hot dogs and stuff for the volunteers. So it's an all-around good community event, kind of the whole county coming together for something that I don't think anybody can argue with, improving our beautification and picking up the garbage.
Mayor, should we let that say?
I wasn't planning on talking, but I'm very happy to be a part of this. We had a great event last year. What an awesome organization that LIFT is. So yeah, we're just going to get out and clean some stuff up. I'm looking forward to, I'll probably be out on the creek somewhere, just because that's, I'd love to be out on the creek. And yeah, it's such a great event. I'm just honored to be a part of it, and we have a great list. Last year, we had a lot of rain, but people were out working hard in the rain, and so seeing people, you know, committed to making the community a better place, just what a wonderful event. And so to see it spread like this, it's, I appreciate everyone that's partnering, and we're just happy to be a part of it.
I want to say it is great to see that the three entities working together for everything to bring that thing to the city.
We met last week with some of the Leo Spouts, and picked out some sites and different things, picking up trash, collecting ours and good. I suppose we're up to see the areas a little.
April 27th, you'll be able to register for the projects. They'll all be on the Catoosa Rec website, and there'll be a downloadable waiver, working to get one from all communities. We're thinking there'll be 50 projects, and you'll be able to pick the project you would like to work on until it's full, with both the guys who are still being speaking.
Thank you. Thank you. Nikki, you got the mouse, please?
Yes.
You want to hear things?
Barely made it here in time. She had to finish her corn dog.
Paul.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to report on the review report for the fifth month of the current fiscal year ended in February. Loss receipts for the first five months of the fiscal year exceeded the budget 303,010 by 10.4%. Exceeded the same period prior year 261,000 by 8.8%. The cumulative loss receipts for the most recent 12 months exceeded the prior 12 months $510,000 by 7.3%. And the current month exceeded the same period prior year 75,000 by 14%. On the splash receipts for the 55-month period of the 2014 splash cycle, we collected $45,750,000. With current revenue at 83.2% of budget. Splash receipts for most of, most recent 12 months exceeded the prior 12 months $728,000 by 7.3%. Current month exceeded the same period prior year $108,000 by 12.2%. And I'd also like to report on the 2000, the fifth month of the 2019 fiscal year, with currently 41.67% through the current fiscal year. And revenue before other financing sources and operating transfers for the five months ended February was $11,642,000. We're currently at 43.1% of budget. Therefore, it exceeded the budgeted revenue by $380,000 by 3.4%. And revenue was favorable to prior year $793,000 by 7.3%. Expenditures before other financing uses and operating transfers out for the five-month period were $10,144,000 by 38.9% of budget. Therefore, less than budgeted expenditures by $728,000 by 6.7%. Expenditures were unfavorable for prior year $404,000 by 4.5%. After other financing sources, uses and operating transfers out, revenue exceeded expenditures $1,295,000, favorable to budget $1,295,000, and favorable to prior year $371,000. I might mention that of that million, 1.3 million favorable revenue represented by $380,000 favorable to budget, and the other $900,000 was due to expenditures being favorable to budget.
So $300,000 due to more revenue, $900,000 due to further.
Yes, less than budgeted expenditures.
Thank you, Paul. At this time, we're going to move into new business and recent zoning cases, and I'm going to accuse myself of the first case in commission. Tell our vice chair what we think.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. The first case will be zoning case 1289-19, rezoning of Tax Map 38C, Parcsel 63 and 64 from R1 to CR.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome. Case number 1289-19, the applicant...
After other financing sources, uses and operating transfers out, revenue exceeded expenditures 1,295,000, favorable to budget 1,295,000, and favorable to prior year 371,000. I might mention that of that million, 1.3 million favorable revenue represented by $380,000 favorable to budget, and the other 900,000 was due to expenditures being favorable to budget.
So 300,000 due to more revenue, 900 used for.
Yes, less than budgeted expenditures.
Thank you, Paul. At this time, we want to move into new business and recent zoning cases. We're going to accuse ourselves of the first case in commission. Tyler, our vice chair, will be taking that.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. The first case will be zoning case 1289-19, rezoning of tax map 38C, parcel 63 and 64 from R1 to CR.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome. Case number 1289-19, the applicant James Gann, being represented by Rodney Waters, has requested his property located on Pollard Road be rezoned from R1 to CR. Mr. Waters would like to build some apartments or quadlets on the property. The planning commission met in regards to the case on January 22nd and denied the request three, four, one against, and one recused. The case was denied by the planning commission due to the fact that the request does not comply with the county's future land use map, and according to the county comprehensive plan, we are to use the future land use map as a guideline on development projects for future growth of the county.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the planning commission's decision?
They've been by representatives for.
Okay. Well, we'll get to that. Anybody in favor of the request to rezon? Anybody opposed? Well, I'm sorry, Rodney, I didn't see your hand.
I mean, I'm not just.
Well, you got to vote for both. I need your company. I would just, I'd like to see this happen just so, because I think it would be an improvement to the area. I think, I think it would be a need there. I want to make sure, I don't understand what the, I mean, what that does, the guidelines. What, what does the guidelines cover and what is it going to do?
Yeah. The county's required to have a comprehensive plan by state law. And basically with the county comprehensive plan, what it does is, there were numerous meetings held prior to the county accepting and adopting the county comp plan, and there are areas of the county that were designated for certain land uses, like this particular area, according to the future land use map, is designated for single-family homes. Other areas of the county, more out, maybe in Commissioner Stevens' area or Commissioner Long's further south, are designated more agricultural areas. So it's supposed to give the planning commission and the board of commissioners a map to go by showing where development is expected and what type of development is expected to go there, so we can plan for the future smart, we can be smart about our future development. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but it's basically a guideline that we've done in the past and helps guide our future development in the county.
When does this start?
I just, I mean, I'm not getting an argument here.
Melissa, Mike could answer. Exactly, 2012 or?
I think it's 2011.
Maybe before that was when we did our comp plan. 2010, 2011, maybe. It's good for five years, and every five years it's redone and revisited. So, and we're coming up on a, on a change, on a new comp plan.
Question, and I don't have to call back for it, but this being R1, there is a big commercial, recent commercial place has been put in there, so I don't know what the, the vote was at that time, but so basically, we don't have a residential area there now.
Right, and as far as that is concerned, as far as the commercial behind it, that was a grandfather commercial warehouse that's been there for years and years and years.
It's not a brand new, well?
Yes, it has been renewed, but, and been upgraded, but it's been there for long before zoning was even in place. It's a residential area, but it was there prior to the residential ever being in that area. Then a new owner purchased it and has upgraded it and has a new residence there. But it is grandfather commercial, and that's why that was allowed to take place.
According to my recollection, though, at that point right there, that's the only commercial building that's even in that area right there. The rest of it starts on the other end of the Pollard Road. That's on the vision.
There, there's some more further down Pollard Road towards Candy Cane Lane. There's a commercial down from there or Candy Lane. The new road, the city of Ringgold built, a lot of commercial through there, and then a new commercial building almost right at that intersection in the county as well. So.
So the future plans for that area is, is not allowing more residential built there?
Well.
In that old Pollard Road area?
The comp plan, in my opinion, from a planning standpoint, I think there will be a lot of commercial in that area. That would, will need to be something we look at when we do our new comp plan. Since Candy Lane has been installed, and there's that thoroughfare right along I-75, I see a lot more commercial going in there in the future. So.
What I'm getting at is, right now, it's all residential right there. I know exactly where it's at. But the thing is, is you've got, at that point, you're going to go from there all the way down, but you've got residential all the way around that already. So how can you, I mean, how can that be? I might ask some questions when I'm trying to say, is how, how can we do that?
Well, I'll, I'll think that as far as the, the county comprehensive plan designates this particular area right now as suburban neighborhood. So the way it is right now, it's supposed to be suburban neighborhood, and what is allowed in suburban neighborhood is single-family homes. So in this particular area, that's just what's allowed right now. And so technically, you know, a CR does not fit single-family homes. That's more of a multifamily use.
This was last update in 2010.
I forget the exact dates. It's around that time frame. We did our unified development code in 2012, and just prior to that, we did our comp plan. 2010, 2012.
The comp plan's a 20-year plan. It's every five years they do, they call it short-term work program, short-term update where we revisit it, but it's a 20-year plan.
Right.
But James, Mr. Waters has to apply based on the comp plan as it stands now. Not, not a future, a future, say, hey, it could be commercial, it could be not.
Right. That's correct.
So Mr. Waters, these pictures that you handed out, is this what your plan is?
Yes, I understand.
Because you're still going to have to go before James submitted more.
Yes, sir. I'm aware of that. The, I tried to get my, he's ran a conference early for some of my work, and I tried to get him to kind of draw a little diagram, but he just stood behind. He couldn't get this in time, even though I've had an extra 30 days, I still couldn't get this. But this is what similar, very similar to this is what I'm doing and what I like to do, or asking to do, because it's kind of sloping down, and it's kind of, you know, more towards the middle, you know, up Pollard Road. And I think it, you know, I know that's, I didn't, wasn't really aware of the comprehensive plan, but it's obviously old, and I would like to see it kind of outdated, you know, updated. And in my personal opinion, I think it would be a good fit. You have the big trailer park right behind it, which will always be there, you know, because the guys, he's not going to get rid of it if a lot of veldters approach you trying to get it. And I just thought it would be a good fit for the area myself. That's the reason I'm asking.
How many units are you looking at, putting them just?
I'd like to do three.
Three, good, but how many?
Four.
Four?
Yes, sir.
So that's 12?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, obviously, I'll start out with one, and if that's very successful, do, you know, all the cover, which I think it will be. I want a couple of pieces of rental property now, you know, they don't stay, they don't stay any longer. I've had, for example, a lot of these properties in front of my residence that's real piece of property aren't part, and the lady finally blew it out. People should know she hadn't been there for a day or two, and I'm already getting phone calls from it, so I think there is a need.
What's the basic size of these units? Twelve, because I'm familiar with property, twelve seems like a lot.
Well, it's, I don't have the exact measurements, but from what I consider, based on the rules and regulations and all, I think you'd find you'd go there. But I'm not interested in that.
I'd say that and 12.
Yes, sir. As far as property won't fit with the zoning restrictions and everything.
But your plan, I'm just 12.
That's what I'm planning on.
Yes, sir.
It's part of that.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else want to speak for or against? Do I hear a motion to, let's see, if I make a motion, I can do a motion, all right?
Yes.
Well, I kind of sort of did.
For or against them?
Right.
Yeah, we did a motion. Then you would call for a motion to either uphold the planning commission's recommendation, which would be to deny zoning, overturn the planning commission's recommendation, which would be to allow them, or you can take the planning commission's recommendation and make modifications. If you wanted to add conditions.
What do you want?
You could remand this to the planning commission with corrections. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to make a motion to accept this as a CR zone? That would be correct. The motion would be, and for the minutes, to overturn the planning commission's recommendation and approve the rezoning procedure.
Yes. I hear a second.
That motion without the like and say.
Can I say?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll say it, I'll say it. So all, yeah, let's, 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 let's do a roll. So all in favor of the motion, which would be, I understand, it's a long process, to not to allow, to allow a CR.
Or just to deny.
But you need to go along with the planning.
Well, that's, that's on the motion, yeah.
We can't, we can't vote, we're not voting on him going back to the zoning commission with an updated plan.
The motion for you now, but now before he built, he would have to go on the floor.
My, what I would like to see done, I'd like to see him take the comprehensive plan to the planning and zoning commission and say, here's my plan, here's my buildings, and here's the property.
One option, as well as with the motion, if it's approved, is to just have it at what Mr. Waters recommended, three units. That way, you know, just three units are allowed, and it's not a step forward with five units.
You can put good conditions, you can put your own conditions on your rezoning. So I would be in favor of approving the rezoning if he goes before the zoning and planning commission with a comprehensive plan. A plan that involves rain, stormwater runoff.
That would get the trucks, that would go back on the zoning, is that not very?
Absolutely. Before anything, before he's built out there, he'd be required to come up with, it would just all be handled in council.
I like that, sir. So he has to do what Commissioner Harris is suggesting?
Absolutely. He'll have to get us a site plan and, you know, all that good stuff, so all that would be in a damn place.
I think that's the case, the energy development.
Correct.
Right.
And then with, with something of this nature, there'll be stormwater requirements and things like that, it'll have to be handled, so.
And if he fails to do it, then that doesn't just?
It wouldn't be approved.
It wouldn't be approved, I think.
Correct.
Okay. So if we vote yes, we're voting for a CR. For a CR, which no one is going to vote back to.
With a cabinet, three cabinet.
Three at the cabinet.
No, the current motion doesn't have a cabinet. Unless Commissioner Long wants to amend the motion. Three units, nine of you?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll add that to the motion. Mrs. Cabinet, it's three buildings.
Three buildings.
Well, you can.
Because it's four, four per building.
Yes, sir.
Will you, will you really say that, amend the motion?
I'll say that. Thank you. You would have to leave on this one. Okay, roll call, please. So does everybody understand the rule?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, Chairman Hendrick, good to see you. Want me to take the next one? That would be easy.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The next case is case number 1290-19. The applicant Porter Bub has requested his property located on Dedmon Road be rezoned from A1 to R1 for development purposes. The planning commission met in regards to the case on February 26th and approved the request five to zero, where he's only does comply with the county comp plan. I will say, this afternoon, we were forwarded, my office, me and we, an email from Mr. Bub's surveyors, where he shows that he can meet site distance requirements in the road departments So staff would also recommend that it is approved.
Is there anyone here for or against on this? Do we have a motion to approve or disapprove?
I'm going to make a motion.
So. Any more questions for that?
The only thing I'm concerned with is right there in that curb, and we need to come up with some kind of safety. I know we talked about it, we need to come up with some kind of, something, but I travel there every day, and I've seen cars come around that curb, and, you know, come around them curbs, I mean, it's for residence safety, that's, that's mainly what I'm after, really. I've seen cars actually run off in that rock.
I'm sorry.
It's very dangerous.
The.
It's over by the ramp over there.
Correct.
There'll be traffic, traffic, like there's two lanes that come through there. Maybe there's kids in that area, and there's something we need to, you know, I don't have a problem with it personally, but we need to look at some kind of safety precautions for the future that we develop.
One, one thing the county has in place is a driveway permit. A permit's required for anyone who puts in a driveway by our road department, and Jeremy Broson from the road department goes out and he'll ensure that wherever the driveway's going, it meets site distance requirements before any tiles are placed or anything like that, to ensure that, you know, all the laws are met and county ordinances are met as far as those things are concerned. So everything should be handled in this particular area on that.
And it's 35 mile an hour, correct?
Yes, it is.
And that's something we need to look at the traffic study on, because that's a little too fast anyway.
I, I don't, I don't know a lot of people that, I've not seen a lot of people that go that slow, everything, the lines or the horns, yeah.
Something we might need to look at, a traffic study on it, and at that point in time, ladies, if you have any more questions on this particular test.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
James? James?
The next case is case number twelve ninety-one-nine nineteen, rezoning of Tax Map Forty-seven B, parcel nineteen. The applicant, Heritage Development LLC, has requested the property located on Pollard Hall Road be rezoned from A one to R one for development purposes. The Planning Commission met in regards to the case on February twenty-sixth and approved the request five to zero. The rezoning does comply with the county comp plan, and, uh, the rezoning request, uh, would actually comply with the county's previous ordinance, uh, as far as, uh, one acre lot size. Uh, so it, it would go along when that development was constructed in the first place.
Do we have anyone here for or against on this particular case?
I'm for it.
Well, that's a shock.
This is probably across from the L O A for school.
Yes, sir. Environmental health has signed off, there, there are a lot of soil issues, as far as septic goes in that area, uh, but environmental has signed off on these odds, saying that septic will work.
Any questions, comments? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
And do you have one more?
Case number twelve ninety-two-nine nineteen. The applicant, Elizabeth Hawke from the press, has requested the property located on Dedmon's Lane be rezoned from R one to R three, probably the title on there, I just realized, for development purposes. Uh, it's Tax Map Thirty-eight B, parcel one hundred A. Uh, the Planning Commission met in regards to the case on February twenty-sixth and approved the request four to zero. The rezoning does comply with the county comp plan.
Is there anyone here for or against on this particular case? Do I have a motion to approve or disapprove?
I'm making a motion to approve. I'll second.
Any questions for James? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Commissioner comments, gentlemen, the audience, say.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Shirley Smith for her kind donation of over ten thousand dollars to the county. Thank you so much for that donation, Shirley.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say the same thing, thanks to Smith family, uh, for the donation, Larry Jenner, and we put good, we put a good use for, for our kids and our residents of our county. I also want to thank, you know, Tucson County Reg Department for the job they're doing over there, helping with the kids and, you know, for our future, and, you know, recreation communities are, are ready out for the kids in our community to, you know, to keep, you know, being a child, a kid, and learning and, you know, transpiring of adults, and I, I want to thank y'all for the job you do, and, you know, I've built with y'all many times, and y'all've done a great job for me, and I just want to commend on the job that I'm doing, and trying to get the community involved. Uh, yeah, I'll echo that with the Smith family, and I appreciate it, and I look forward to a lot of events over there. We have a, a long history with, uh, the column date, so, um, I got my active debut on that stage, and look forward to never doing that again. Look, I do better than the audience, but thank you, thank, uh, First Volunteer Bank for your donation, and I want to thank everybody here for getting out and coming and, yeah, and exercising your, your rights as a citizen to, to hold, uh, your county government accountable.
I'll echo that and look forward to September fourteenth, and hearing some big new western band.
Do we get a discount?
I just get...
All right, at this time, we wanted to take possession of person now, or... Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chairman Hendry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutler?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
You're in possession. Do we have a motion to come out and take possession?
I can move.
Do you have any votes, if you want to say?
Say it.
All in favor of coming out and taking, say aye.
Aye.
We have that in possession, and have lots to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.